Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and call the Tuesday, September 19, 2017, Warrenton Board of Alderman Meeting to session. If you would, please rise and state a pledge of allegiance with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda would be the recognition of Detective Justin Unger and Officer Benjamin Howser.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Board. We've got two officers present tonight that I'd like to recognize. The first would be Patrolman Benjamin Howser.
Please stand up.
In April, he responded to a call here in town for what would have been a sick case at the time, along with firefighters and EMS. They got there and they were talking to this individual, who then proceeded to get worse and go into cardiac arrest. All the personnel on scene provided lifesaving measures. The individual was transported to the hospital, made a full recovery. On August 29th, there was a ceremony at the firehouse, where the fire department honored all the EMS personnel, all the fire personnel, all the police personnel who were on scene, and gave them a silver lifesaving award. And also, the Missouri House of Representatives wrote a letter of recognition to all those personnel for their actions on that night in April of this year.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service in doing that.
Second officer I'd like to recognize is Detective Justin Unger. Last week, he attended the Midwest Justice for Children Conference. Every year, there's two awards given out called the Champion for Children Award, two in the whole state. Detective Unger got one of those awards this year for his outstanding work in investigating crimes against children.
Thank you very much. Proud to have you guys on our force.
Thank you.
Next item would be the consent agenda items.
First item is the regular meeting minutes from September 5, 2017. Then we have award the grass bid to MFA in Winnsville, Missouri at $57.50 per bag, which is the low bid, and the budget amount is $8,000. Award the oil change bid to Otalo Plus for oil changes, they were the only bidder. Approval to hire Steve Polston as a wastewater treatment plant operator at $14.50 an hour with a start date of September 27, 2017. And then we have approval of the following public work projects. We have a street overlay of Jaspering Lane in the amount of $34,510. The budget amount was $34,600. The street overlay of Pinckney Road from West Boonslick to Cecilia Lane in the amount of $16,095. The budget amount was $16,100. We have the street overlay of Northwest Street from West Boonslick to Oak Street in the amount of $2,910, and the budget amount was $3,000. Then there's a stormwater project, which is the pipe on north side of Banner from Dryden Street to Troy Road in the amount of $4,079. The budget amount was $4,100. And then we have concrete street repairs at 1035, 1028, 1017, and 1055 Arlington Way in the amount of $5,705. The budget amount was $5,800. And then concrete street repairs for Balboa Circle to Page Marie Drive in the amount of $3,491. The budget amount was $3,500.
Any questions or comments?
Are these used to be completed yet this year?
Yes, sir.
Calendar year?
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, second by Alderman Shel Harvey. Roll call, please.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz is absent. Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Passes five zero with one absent. Next item on the agenda would be hearing from the public. We ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name, and we give you five minutes to speak. Don't all rush up at once.
My name is Ethan Todd. I wanted to basically make my presence known in that I know many of you, but for some of you, we haven't met. I'm a Warrenton native. I grew up just down the street, went to Warrenton High School, and love to be back in my hometown. I've done a lot of work here over the last year with A Better Road Forward and some of the groups that have tried to fight toll roads, particularly along Interstate 70. I serve as the Vice President of the Barkwood Company. It's a full-service political consulting, government relations, and lobbying shop that focuses primarily on Missouri political and governmental clients. As many of you may know, the city will be entering into a relationship with me. I look forward to working with all of you, either on a name-to-name basis, every day, anything I can do to represent the city's interests, particularly on transportation or other topics in Jefferson City and abroad. So, I just wanted to kind of make sure everybody has a face to go with the name, have a nice introduction with everyone. And obviously, I love working in my hometown, and I really, really look forward to having a great relationship with all of you moving forward. And great to see my next-door neighbor and the many of you that I've known for many years, and I hope that this is a very great relationship moving forward.
I wanted to probably personally thank you for the work you did on the last legislative work with the toll road. You were very active in stopping that from moving forward, because we were concerned about this becoming law prior to the end of, I think it was this year.
Correct.
So it had to be kind of killed in legislation by the end of May, and I know you were active in that and were successful.
Yeah, it was a monumental effort, and I'm sure it's something that all of you have heard a lot about. I know, obviously, Mr. Shel Harvey attended many of our meetings, and, you know, obviously, anything we can do moving forward to help the city's interests, particularly on transportation, but just in general with Jefferson City, you know, we are here to help as best we can. And...
Ethan, are you going to be here for item 11? Mr. Ledbetter's here, going to talk to us about A Better Road Forward. You going to stick around for that?
Yes, I will stick around for that. Obviously, Mr. Ledbetter will be the one presenting, not myself, but I will be here for the duration of that.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the... Would like to come up and speak?
Mrs. Fitzsimmons? Did you want to address the board? Yes, did you call me?
I did.
Kate, would you like to come up?
My name is Ann Fitzsimmons, and I live at 606 West Boonslick. I called today to find out why Pinckney Street was closed, because I've missed a couple of meetings. And the last one I attended, that was denied, refuted. And today, they're out marking my yard for the location of gas or sewer or whatever. And I just wanted to know why. My answer when I called City Hall was that the property owner wanted to close Pinckney. Well, I thought Pinckney was a public street. Who's the property owner?
Which end of Pinckney Street do you live on, Mrs. Fitzsimmons?
I live right off Boonslick.
Okay. And as I understand it, we are closing the...
The other end.
...area south of Cecilia.
Mm-hmm.
Cecilia. And that is, I think the meeting you attended, we actually, it was the first meeting, I was back on the board, we actually, the discussion was to close...
Holt Street.
...Cecilia, wasn't it?
Well, actually, it was...
It was shelved.
We actually found out that it was both, it was considered Pinckney on both ends, correct? So it's really supposed to be Pinckney on both ends, but we only closed from Cecilia area south.
And the meeting I attended, that was denied, put on hold, or whatever, because Keven didn't tell us what was going on on Boonslick.
But that's a different part of that street. I came out and drove Pinckney the morning after our meeting to re-familiarize myself. And it appears to me that the Cecilia Street is the best way in, at least to the constituents that were here that evening, and that was the street that they were concerned about. South Pinckney, in my opinion, was very dangerous. Dangerous from the standpoint of the small bridge that was there, and also from trying to make, it was impossible to make a left turn off of Pinckney onto Highway U.
Right.
And dangerous to make a right turn, because it was a blind corner. So, that was discussed at our meeting, meetings after that subsequently, and it was decided by this board that primarily for public safety, that that be closed, and we would, in fact, leave Cecilia and the northern part of Pinckney open, which is what goes by your house.
Okay. Well, then, what are they marking my yard for?
My guess is, as is required by state law, we have to have 1-800-DIGRIGHT come out when we're anywhere in proximity to digging and excavating, but we're at the...
What it is, they're marking all along West Main Street, Boonslick, up through there. Their CenturyLink is putting a boring up to the ASCS office. They're not sure what side of the road they're going on, so they're having, that's why both sides of the road are marked all the way up from Pinckney all the way up to the ASCS office. If you go up through there, both sides of the road are totally, there's marking all over the place. That's all it's for.
We might be unsound.
So that, basically, has nothing to do with...
Nothing to do with it, no.
...Keven and closing the road.
No.
It's a public you tour the...
The ASCS office is what it's for. They're upgrading their service.
Well, before you step away, you satisfied with that answer?
Satisfied.
Sure. I don't have a problem with closing that bad end of Pinckney Street at all. What I have a problem with is somebody telling me it was at the request of the property owner. Well, a public street is owned by the taxpayers, not one individual.
Right. True. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? All right, we'll bring that to a close and open it up for the Board of Alderman comments.
Well, I think we should, we all have it laying in front of us, a announcement that there's going to be a groundbreaking for the, starting of the construction of the new interchange on 40, on Highway 70, on September 26, at 5:30. It's an exciting time. People have been asking, is that project going to happen? What's going on with that? Well, we're finally going to see the start of dirt moving. The state has issued the contract to the bidder, and we're in go mode. So, this is an exciting time. Developers committed their resources to this project, and now that it's moving, hopefully it will generate some excitement, not only among the citizens, but hopefully among certain developers or retail businesses, to see the warranty really is moving forward.
Springboard off that, I will say, I believe shovels may be in the ground the 26th, but they're talking about starting the project the 27th. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's not just one of these things of the Board and the mayor sticking some shovels in the ground, and then we'll wait two months. The next day, they're going to start the project and start working on it. And talk about completion, if all goes well, within a year of having, hopefully next fall, having traffic on that overpass, within one year. I think it's pretty good progress in my book. Any other comments? I know I kind of jumped in there, I'm sorry.
No, I think to stretch that a little further, I think we really owe staff a great deed of thanks for the, this just didn't happen.
Yeah.
For the tremendous amount of work that went on here at City Hall. I know I took courage by the sitting board that was in office at the time, the mayor, to move this project forward, but it would not have happened without a great deal of work.
Definitely.
Especially from Terry Interstaff.
Yep. Actually, get the springboard off that too, because you're stealing my tongue. Folks, that's something I wanted to address, and I actually made note of. Sometimes people get aggravated because staff may not be giving the answer they want, or what they feel is right. Understand there are certain parameters our staff has to work within. They, I, I would like to think, and I will maintain, that our staff tries to stay as professional as possible when dealing with certain situations. One thing I think that people don't understand is how much we have going on. Folks, if you stop and look, we have a new pool that's going on, that's being built as we speak. The foundation's going in, the roads are being laid for the new park. That isn't just something you put together overnight. There was a long project that we worked on and diligently worked on and came up with. The overpass is another huge project. I mean, folks, you've got to stop and put yourself in their shoes for a little bit and understand how many big projects we've had going on with the staff size we have. I know big corporations that don't take on those big projects and have a lot more staff than what we do. Our staff, some, and I'll admit it, probably under-thanked and overworked, and I appreciate them. So, you know, all I'm saying, folks, is when you get frustrated, just cut them a little slack and understand, they've got a lot going on. And we put a lot of, a lot of pressure on them to get stuff done, and I appreciate everything they do, because that, once they balk or gotten mad, we've always been, always been there to get it accomplished. So, thank you.
Mayor? Yes, sir. Can I make one comment? Sure. I want to thank Brad and his crew for, if you drive by our city cemetery, you'll notice that the entrance, the wrought iron above the top, over the top, and the poles that go down, and the big concrete posts, that's all been sanded and repainted white. And it really looks nice. So I want to thank Brad and his crew for working that project in as they did. I'm proud of our cemetery. I think it's something that we need to keep up, and Mark Watson and his group do an excellent job of keeping the mode. So, that's all they got.
Thank you. It's one area that sometimes, not only people notice, or when they drive by, they don't take a look at it.
I do.
I agree. They've done a great job.
So anybody going to say anything about what's going on Saturday? Or is nothing going on Saturday?
I don't know of anything going on Saturday. Do you?
No. Mike, you're a tourist, you're hanging out going on...
I've got my tennis shoes on, but I'll have to keep walking up and down the street.
So, I mean, just to remind everybody, Fall Festival this Saturday, free concert, just come down, a lot of food, as I understand, a lot of food trucks, good food, hopefully good times, so encourage everybody to come out.
Maybe half the crowd would know Little River Band, maybe.
Don't ask me to sing a song, but I, sounds great.
Nobody with a grape beer.
If you don't know, YouTube, they're a really good band.
Yeah.
And we're privileged to have them. And, you know, one thing I can say is Alderman Shel Harvey's worked diligently on a lot of that stuff with the Tourism Board, so thank you for doing that, because it does make a, quite a, quite an impact. If you were here last year, I think it's been a long time since I've seen that many people on Main Street. It was quite nice.
I just recommend the band. Brad is the one that does all the work.
So, once again, folks, come out, it's something we do every year to try and give back to our citizens and as well showcase our town. It brings, it draws people here to see our town and how proud we are of it.
I think probably something else needs to be said about, that people will say, well, why are you doing this? You know, I mean, you've got other projects and this, but this is really being paid for by the people who spend the nights in the hotels as they come through town in Warrenton and stay there. It's the sales tax for tourism that was created a while back when it was voted in, and so anybody coming through the community, staying at the hotels, is paying this tax, and we take that tax and we use it to promote tourism. And so that's the specific purpose of it. This is certainly all about tourism, bringing people in and introducing them to our community. So it really shows the direct relationship for the, where the source is, the money coming from, and how it's used, and what it is to promote our community.
Agreed. Any other comments? So, where's that shirt again?
Hmm.
So if you see this colored shirt, please come up and say hello, and we will be out there and about in the public.
This needs to be corrected, though. I'm not elected, I'm appointed.
Well, we can do that. But those shirts are pretty obnoxious, so you should be able to see us. So, all right, next item on the agenda will be the approval of temporary liquor by the drink liquor license for La Moca Restaurant on October 7, 2017, at the banquet center. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the temp liquor by the drink liquor license at La Moca Restaurant on October 7, 2017, at the banquet center, I believe, Alderman Gary Miller?
Yeah.
Second. Alderman Ock?
Costello.
Costello, thank you. Motion was made by Alderman Gary Miller, seconded by Alderman Costello. Roll call, please.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one absent. Next item would be the approval of temporary liquor by the drink liquor license for Oliver's Restaurant for Fall Fest.
Is that moved? Second.
Motion made by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Shel Harvey. Roll call, please.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one absent. All right, next item on the agenda would be funding options for the Better Road Forward. If we could have Jim Ledbetter, if you'd like to come forward first, please.
Good evening.
Hi, Jim.
How you doing?
Maybe I'll just pass these out on the... I guess the good news is, I'm glad that the overpass is being broken, the ground's being broken over a free interstate. And to go back and talk a little bit about what happened, Director McKenna came in on December 7, 2015. Director McKenna, that was his first day, and in his initial opening, he referred back to his assistant's job in New Hampshire, where he stated that there was 89 miles of New Hampshire turnpike that made $120 million in revenue a year for New Hampshire. And in Missouri, there would be no options off the table. That was his first statement, the first day that he was in office. He immediately went about trying to set up funding throughout the state and the legislature. In December of 2016, Representative Kevin Corleau filed a bill, House Bill 155, pre-session, that would allow for public-private partnerships to come into play in Missouri. And at the same time, in November of that year, Patrick McKenna wrote on November 21st that the Missouri Department of Transportation requests a one-year extension to its participation in the previous provisionally-approved interstate system reconstruction and rehabilitation pilot program to toll Interstate Route 70. There's two. He requested and received that extension, along with House Bill 155. We found out about it and immediately started working towards seeing where it was headed. In February, McKenna came out and spoke to a group in Jonesburg. It was a local group, just trying to find out where he was headed with it. We immediately saw that the funding that he was trying to get was not through taxation. He was really looking to put tolls into play on I-70. And it wouldn't have been as bad if it had been from border to border. But unfortunately, his tolling method would have started at Forestelle and gone to Blue Springs. So he was really trying to saddle the rural communities with the tolling. I don't think he thought that it would work if he would have tried to gone into metropolitan areas with the tolling. What could we do? At that point, we decided that we had to gather, a group together, and try to fight it. So we did. We gathered a local group in Warrenton and Montgomery County, and we started A Better Road Forward. Amazingly, we got on the telephone and we started talking to other communities, made some calls to Fulton, asked them what they thought about the waiver. They had absolutely no idea that there was a waiver. We called Louisville, and I talked with their economic director. Had no idea that there was a waiver. In fact, they called one of the guys at the University of Missouri that they worked with, and said, I don't know anything about it, but I'm going to check it out, and came back and he said, yeah. He said, it looks like there's a very good chance we could have toll roads. That's what the legislature's looking at. We found that by and large, along the I-70 community, they just didn't really understand or know that the waiver was in place and that it was, it could happen. We had, we had our work cut out for us. So, we started by talking to everybody that we could, local communities, and we started trying to raise money and put this together and form a coalition. And we did that. We formed it. We built an advocacy group of concerned citizens, small business organizations, municipalities, communities across that I-70. We raised about $80,000 total. And we were able to go to Jeff City and work with our lobbyists. We hired a lobbyist group, we got them involved, and we worked very hard. And in doing so, we were able to get several things accomplished. We were able to get a bill passed that blocked tolls in Missouri, or any money being spent on toll roads through 2018 in Missouri. We got Corleau's bill shelved. We were able to virtually stop it last year. And we have an amendment to the Constitution that is currently filed and waiting, if we want to go out and get signatures, depending on what happens, because right now, we still have another threat ahead of us, and that threat could be at the federal level. We really don't understand what's going to happen with the federal. Right now, they're talking about privatization of the roads and what's going to happen with the federal group. And we don't know what can, that's another battle. We don't know what can happen there. But we do have that referendum filed, and that could, we could get those signatures necessary, and if that were to happen, that could block toll roads in the state of Missouri. Because once you get one, then it goes just down the list, and you can go to 55, you can go to, all the way down 44, whatever, because we are really behind. We need money to fix our roads, and there's going to have to be an answer to it. But as far as what we're able to do, there are three groups touring the state currently that are, they're listening to concerned citizens, there's one that's a legislative group, one that's a governor-appointed group, and... There's one that's a legislative group, one that's a governor-appointed group, and which is the other? There's three groups total.
Yeah, you have 21st Century, which Governor Greitens put together. The House of Representatives has one filed, and there is a private one, but it's not moving currently. I don't recall the name of it. There's been no action that I'm familiar with.
And they're a sounding board, they're listening. They're trying to find out what, any ideas that are out there on funding, and they're taking ideas back. And it all comes down to, how are you going to pay for it? There's new ideas out there. There's a new gentleman hired, Michael Demers was hired in March of 2017 by McKenna. And he is looking for alternative methods of fund. He came from Arizona, and that's what he did there, was look for alternative means to fund their highways in Arizona. And he was previously in New York doing theirs.
What were some of those alternatives?
Well, some of the alternatives come into play, like smart highways. Are you familiar with what they're doing with some of those things?
But how do you build smart highways?
Well, one of the ways is you, they're doing like, you're in the old slot cars, the track, okay? One of the things they're doing currently that they're talking about is, they take panels, concrete panels, they embed the wiring in there, that would be for 5G, which would be an internet type, that would run autonomous cars, that would also do your internet in the car. It could also do a lot of other things that we don't know. But it's also for on-the-go charging for electric vehicles.
Well, Jim, I don't speak for the entire board, but I doubt, and I really appreciate what your group did in stopping the toll roads. I don't think there's anybody on this panel that is in favor of toll roads. I know I'm certainly not. I was recently in Oklahoma, and I related that to the board. It cost me twenty-two dollars to get from Oklahoma City to the Missouri border, close to Jobbs. I get all that. And we've stopped, through your group and others, have stopped this direction towards toll roads. But if nothing is done... I spent a lot of time this summer out on the hill by Denny's. And if you knew how many times Interstate 70 was both slowed and stopped due to congestion, it's pretty scary what we've got in front of us. So I'm more concerned, I think it's great to be against something and to be able to stop it, you've got to have a better idea as to how we're going to fix it. And you touched a little bit on the issue of funding, and that's the only thing that's going to fix our interstates. Absolutely. Stopping toll roads in and of itself will not fix our interstates. We still have that problem out there ahead of us. So I guess my interest is where, and that's why I ask if Ethan was going to stay, as far as ranking of gas tax, where does Missouri rank to other states?
In gas tax?
Yes.
Right now, in gas tax, we're one of the lower gas taxes around.
I think it's like more than ninety-four.
Yeah. But you've got to look at our surrounding state.
And I get that. So, you know, unless you or Ethan or somebody has got a magic fix for this, Missouri can't be expected to have good highways and roads if we're not spending the same amount of money. And I agree with you, it's how to fund it. And so my concern is, what I hear and see, and I've talked to our state representative at length about this, and he said, "Part of what's going on in Jeff City," and Ethan might concur in this or not, "but you've got an awful lot of elected state officials that have sworn that they're not going to raise taxes." So they're not going to put an increase in gas tax on the ballot because that would upset all the people if they told there's not going to be any taxes, new taxes. So how do we get around that? And that's, I'm looking for answers as to how to move forward, and how do we get additional funding? Nobody is happy about being taxed more. But I think we've really missed an opportunity in the last seven or eight years with the consistently low gas prices to address being ranked forty-ninth, or whatever the number is, out of fifty as far as our gas tax. I don't, I don't understand how anyone could expect us to compete and have good highways if we're not approaching it with the same amount of funding.
Well, let's talk about that for just a second. We have the seventh largest number of roads in the United States in Missouri, and the forty-seventh, we're ranked forty-seventh in funding for those roads in the United States. And you're absolutely correct about the taxation, one hundred percent. A better road forward can't go to the state and tell them exactly how to do it. We are in favor, and we have posted exactly what you're talking about. We've said exactly what you have said. But when you go to the state and you tell them that, "Yeah, we'd love to see you raise taxes," because you've got to pay for them some way, right? You agree with that, don't you?
Absolutely.
Some way. You've got to look for alternative methods to do that, so that we can get the roads fixed. There's got to be funding, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the legislators know that. They know that they're going to have to sell a tax. They know they're going to end up having to do something, because otherwise, they're going to have real problems. We know exactly what you see on the highway when you're sitting up on the, out there by the Veterans Memorial.
Yeah, it's pretty gruesome.
It is pretty gruesome, indeed. And you can see the deaths, and you can see the accidents, and McKenna is documenting every bit of that, because he knows how dangerous... He knows that on Wednesdays in the state of Missouri, there's more tractor-trailer rigs in the state of Missouri than anywhere else in the United States, right here. And we've got them all on Interstate 70. And it's a problem, and you're right. And we're advocates. And we want to see those same things you want to see. And we've got to be there as an advocate to say, "We want exactly what you're saying. We want to see the funding." And we've got to get the legislators to the point where they'll sell that. And that's what they've got to do. They've got to realize that they've got to create funding. Would y'all agree?
If they don't fix it, Jim, some big government's going to come fix it for you. And you touched on earlier that you don't know what the feds are doing. And I believe that's what... If our state-elected officials don't get serious with finding a solution to this, you guys are going to be fighting toll roads again.
Well, and there's a real possibility. And that's something that we don't want to see, and that's why we've been judicious with our budget. We haven't spent all of our money. We are holding our money because we know there could be a fight on the horizon. And we're desperately trying to make sure that exactly, that there is, there are some things that are on the horizon that we may very well have to battle. But we also hope that ideas come. The smart highway, that may not be that far off. They're doing tests right now.
But the smart highway costs money to build, is my opinion.
Ninety percent. That's another one that actually has a partnership involved, that one that could possibly pay a big part of the overlay.
But somebody's got to make money for a partnership to work.
And they do. They do. And that's the key.
But that's a tax.
Yeah. The, that's, the problem is, is that, that particular deal, and we'll have to wait and see how that plays, because you and I don't have a crystal ball. But the bottom line, our organization is in play, and we want exactly what you're talking about.
Well, I applaud this board for voting to fund the barter group that Ethan is with. I think that's a smart move. But what I don't want you to think, at least from this seat of this dais, that I'm just against toll roads. I don't want toll roads, but something needs to be done to supplant that, or we're going to be looking at it again.
Well, my comment is, you know, and I'm one who commutes into St. Louis every day, so I probably spend more time on I-70 than probably anybody else on the panel, maybe now except John. But I spend a lot of time, and I'm not opposed to toll roads if they're equally done, fairly done across the whole state. My issue is with the public-private partnership. When you have a private partnership whose motivation is to make money, and you have a captured audience, there's, what's the incentive for that partnership to reinvest revenues back into the product? If you're driving down Highway 70, and your private partnership is making five percent or ten percent, and the road's deteriorating, those investors still want their five or ten or whatever percentage they're making. They have absolutely no incentive as a private partnership to improve the road, because you're going to drive on that road whether it's crappy or good, because you have an alternative. If I have an alternative to drive down 70, and that's my only choice, the road can be horrible, and I can pay the toll, but if the money's going back in to be in to the investor, which some of it should, where's the obligation on the part of the private partnership to reinvest part of their earnings back into the capital, which is improving the road? And I think we've seen that across the country in some of the partnerships, that don't make that reinvestment back into the road. So you're forced to drive on a product that's just as bad as it is now. So to me, the bigger issue is allowing private partner, public partnerships and private partnerships to come into places where taxpayers have no alternative other than use the product. And that's, to me, is the big issue. I mean, I don't care if I, how I pay for it, if it's a gas tax, if it's a toll, whatever it is, I just want to see a mechanism where the profit goes back into the product. And we don't get that on a public-private partnership. If that's owned by the state, obviously the state has to reinvest it back into the product. But if it's a private partnership, they have investors to please, they have literally no incentive to improve that road. So I think that's, to me, the bigger issue, whether it's on the state or federal level. Where's the incentive to improve the road if you're playing off investment?
You're right. And I think if you, if you look at the long term, you'll see that many or most are filing bankruptcy.
Right.
And they're moving out of it. And today, in the Post-Dispatch, take a look, because you'll see that Lambert Field is just about to slide into that public-private partnership. And when that happens, you know, they're doing the studies, and they're looking at three other airports that have done, I think Puerto Rico's the one that they're studying the closest.
Well, that's a great example. Puerto Rico government is doing a great job.
At any rate, take a look, because that's another one that you're describing, and you'll see what's happening.
And we see the same thing happening in town with rental properties, where a rental property may be subsidized by state funding, the property owner takes the rent, purchased the property, takes the rent, and then we get phone calls because the property deteriorating, because that property owner doesn't realize they have to reinvest part of that revenue stream back into that home to support the community. It's the same concept. And the city is faced with problems where the private-public partnership, and that's really what it is, because it's funded through governmental money, is not turning around and reinvesting. So now we have problems, and we have to discuss what ordinances do you put in place to force that property owner to reinvest that property.
Absolutely.
Same concept.
Do you mind if I make one comment? When the dust settles, we're going to have to have a gas tax increase. I mean, you can push it all over the floor, but when it comes down, and maybe we need to have a grassroots effort in Missouri. If it's explained to the citizens and the marketing idea gets through to them, "We've got to have funding to do these roads," maybe that's where it needs to go, is the citizens of all our communities in Missouri force the legislature to do what they need.
Well, that was the question I was going to ask Ethan. He spends a lot of time up there, is, you know, what's the appetite for putting the tax back on the ballot?
None. Well, there's a couple of issues, too. And he will address, I'm sure, the alternative fuel and that.
Absolutely. So we've spoken with reps on this issue extensively, largely when we were trying to fight this initially, but since the end of the legislative session, we've had meetings. The 21st Century Task Force was founded by Governor Greitens with both private and legislative entities on the board, with the intent to try to find what these new solutions might be. Ultimately, funding transportation in Missouri is going to come down to simply, the legislature and the governor are going to have to decide something. Now, what that something is, that's the question. I've had meetings with representatives, like Representative Jeff Messenger from Western Missouri. They are currently looking at how they can potentially budget a gasoline tax increase in Missouri that might be more palatable to the voters. Other representatives have considered items such as trying to push for another statewide sales tax. If you remember, one of those was attempted in 2013, I believe, just to try to move this forward. So there are options on the table, they are trying to find them. What is really important at this time, though, isn't necessarily what the specific of that is, but just making sure that cities like Warrenton, or Jonesburg, or anybody along the I-70 corridor has a seat at the table when this discussion takes place. Because ultimately, it will happen. Ultimately, they will find a way to fund these roads. They simply cannot allow it not to happen. What is really important is that cities like Warrenton and all across I-70 have a seat at the table, have a unified voice, either through a grassroots effort or through something else, just on the simple fact that anybody here knows that the funding of transportation in Missouri and the bulk of transportation in Missouri is focused on St. Louis and Kansas City. And if the rural communities along 70, or 44, or anywhere else don't have somewhat of a unified voice in that effort, they're not going to have a seat at the table when St. Louis and Kansas City dictate what the terms of Missouri's new transportation future look like.
That's one of the, one of the things that we can say, and I think Ethan will vouch for this, too, that if there's nothing else that the Better Roads Forward Group didn't accomplish, they did accomplish, is that they are well-known in Jeff City now, and they do get a hearing. Because I know the group, several of the groups, the members of the group have made trips up there, so.
Yeah, and not even...
Ethan will vouch for that, but that's a...
And not even just Better Road Forward, but cities like Warrenton, cities Columbia, anybody along 70, the city structures and the municipalities and the communities need to keep an eye on this, and they need to be talking with their legislators. Because as all of you that have spoken with Representative Corman or Senator Jeanie Riddle have found out, yeah, there's a huge issue with trying to get a gasoline tax passed, but that doesn't mean there aren't other options. And these communities just need to be keen in their focus in making sure that they're keeping a pulse of what's going on in Jefferson City as these options.
So how do we effectively do that? I mean, we hire your firm, which is going to keep us alert.
Yes.
We certainly contribute to your operation. Does the municipal league have a role, the plays in this? Because I would think if you're trying to unify groups, you look for who's got the conduit to put that together. But is there, there's nothing else going on among any of the organizations, it's just this?
Well, the difficulty right now is the fact that there are obviously competing interests in this to date with multiple task forces, task forces looking at funding mechanisms. 21st Century, which was founded by the governor, is one organization, but the legislature itself has a separate committee trying to find options themselves. Until, say, the findings of these groups come forward, which should be later this year, it's a wait-and-see approach, and everybody just needs to keep a keen eye on what's going to happen. There's also talk that maybe other entities might be looking at different funding mechanisms for the state. It could be potential that maybe you would see legislative, or initiative petition action in the future that might try to touch on something like this, as you mentioned, the grassroots effort. All of this is yet to be seen. It's, until the task forces really release their findings, it's just something that we need to monitor.
So what we're doing, the best way to make sure we have a seat at the table?
Correct. Yes. Essentially, the city of Warrenton has fulfilled that, groups like a Better Road Forward, and there are other transportation advocacy committees across the state, everyone just needs to come together and just understand that rural communities don't necessarily have the same voice in Jefferson City that St. Louis and Kansas City have. Everybody needs to be aware of that, and the better that these groups can work together, the better that it will be for our communities in the long run.
When is this task force, you mentioned that it's going to have recommendations? When is that?
They are set to have a recommendation in December.
Our communities along I-44, working... Are communities along I-44 working, develop their own Better Roads Forward groups or how, what's going on in the rest of the state? Rural is, yeah, it's 70, but it's also 44, it's also 55.
When a Better Road Forward was formed, obviously the intent and the focus was on I-70 because that was what the waiver was initially for. However, the broad language of the waiver actually did imply in our analysis that 44, 55, and other routes could potentially be included in the future for tolling projects. So with that, they were not initially brought into any groups that I'm aware of. There are regional transportation advocacy councils in every part of the state, I'm sure they all have shared concerns, but due to the immediacy of the I-70 threat with Representative Corle's language in House Bill 15570 was the primary target.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Mike, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we'll hear from our Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
The only item I have for you this evening is just to discuss a letter that was received. It was some concerns that were voiced by a citizen of Warrenton. And the reason I bring it up tonight is just to let you and the public know that there were some valid concerns in this complaint related to utility billing and primarily the way that deposits are handled for landlords that own multiple properties. This particular resident came in unfortunately at a time when our regular utility billing clerk was on vacation and there was another staff member filling in, so she wasn't terribly aware of what all of the practices were. It resulted in a request for this resident who owns multiple rental properties to pay an additional deposit in order to get water turned back on at one of his rental properties. And they failed to take a look at the existing policy we had in place where if you have a good credit history, you're not required to pay the additional deposit. The other thing that came out of it was the need for some kind of practice that allows, again, those landlords who own multiple rentals to be able to, without taking any action, have, when a tenant moves out, to have the utilities placed back into their name until the time that a new tenant comes in. And then it would be taken out of the landlord's name and put into the new tenant's name. The practice we had in place was that those landlords would need to come into City Hall and make a written request and sign a document, giving us the ability to put the property back into the landlord's name when the tenant moved out. For those landlords who have a lot of rental properties, that becomes a kind of difficult and time-consuming task. So Gabrielle actually looked at this, she did the research and looked into the issues that were voiced, and we have put into place a procedure where the landlord can provide us with a list of all of their rental properties and sign off on the fact that once those properties, the utilities are turned off by the tenant, that we can automatically put those back into the landlord's name without them really taking any further action. So Gabrielle will be sending out something to all of the landlords we have listed, letting them know that this is something that's new. Again, that requires having good credit history. It will not be made available to those landlords who've had properties that have been sent to collections or that have delinquent accounts on a regular basis, but those with good credit history will do that. The other thing that it really pointed out was, in addition to that, giving some special consideration for those landlords that do have the good credit history. People don't really like to give their driver's licenses out these days and you certainly can't blame them. It's necessary when you have new accounts or no credit history because that's really the only way, when you turn accounts over to collections for collection agencies, to be able to find those individuals and be able to make collections for the city. So we looked at eliminating that requirement for those with good credit history so that they're not having to provide those documents. We are not changing what we are doing for brand-new customers or those who've had delinquent accounts regularly, but for those landlords and others with good credit history, we're going to eliminate that part of the process.
As far as Terry, you've made the comment, good credit history. I think we probably need to define somewhere what that means. So somebody, I mean, everybody's going to come in and say, well, I've got good credit history. I mean, does that mean to, is it defined somewhere?
Yes, already. I can't tell you off the top of my head what that is, but that's been in place for a number of years.
Okay, great.
And that's why this situation was unfortunate because we already had that in place, but the new person who was filling in for the person on vacation really wasn't aware that that was a possibility. So that's a training issue, but it did bring to light some other things that we could work on to become a little bit more customer-friendly. And that's something that in the billing department Gabrielle's always working on. So I wanted you all to be aware, there were some valid concerns and some concerns that brought up ways that we can improve what we're doing. So we're moving forward with that.
Good.
Good news.
That's really all I have tonight. Gary Stone by Thunder with the groundbreaking. We invite all the public to come out. It will be on the west side of the Shops at Warrenton lot at 5:30 PM.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Assistant Director of Operations, Brandy Walter.
Good evening. My first thing I have is the marketing and business support report. And that is more even more than that. It seems to be really working as far as with Michelle doing support calls and calling people, that seems to be working well. We didn't have any grand openings or ribbon cuttings this last month, but Legacy Pharmacy just opened, they're going to be doing a cutting in the next month or two, they don't have it scheduled yet. Deerfield, as you know, is opening on Friday, so they're having a ribbon cutting on Friday, just in time for the Fall Festival.
Is there a mic down there? It's hard to hear you, I don't know why. Thank you.
And that's all I have for that report.
Who was, were you responsible for the newsletter?
Yes.
I thought the newsletter looked great. Got good feedback from the public. One thing I thought about when I read through it is there was a section on the cemetery in there. I wonder if next time we could talk about the new way people can order headstones online and the service, the new service the city is providing.
Sure.
Along that, that might be good public information to include in the newsletter.
I actually thought there was a blurb about...
Oh, was there? I saw a lot of the rules stuff, so maybe I didn't read it close enough, but, you know...
Yeah. That's all I have for that report.
Any questions on the monthly report?
Okay. The next thing I have is the monthly administration report. On there, we did actually end up having one accident this last month, unfortunately broke our record, but it was no claim, so that was good. We had three new hires in different departments, and then this is where I was going to tell you about the newsletter, we sent out over 3,000 newsletters this last month. They went to all the residents, went to different real estate companies and businesses. Any questions?
Anybody else?
And the last thing I have is the updated drug and alcohol testing policy. We added on page number three in section 7.0, we added that 7.2 about not having unauthorized, not having personnel, having unauthorized possession of alcohol on the premises at any time.
Any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the updated drug and alcohol testing policy.
Shall move.
Say. Which one was first? Great. Motion made by Alden Scholl, re-signed by Alden Costello. Vote, call, vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Motion carries five zeros, one absent.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Maintenance and Grounds Director, Brad Fuzi-Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have my monthly maintenance report. Just doing a lot of maintenance.
So when is, when are you going to start setting up for the festival? I mean, you block streets?
We've already, the guy will take care of all that part. We're electric and stuff, as ours is the thing. We finished the three-phase, we did have enough, it's worked out. We did some work with Amarin and we got it done, we got everything in. Had the gentleman come down, inspected it, everything was the way he wanted it, so we shouldn't have any problem with that for the band. We're working now on different things. We're getting all the mats, the cords, the tables, the tents and everything ready. Right now, we're getting everything loaded, marked and ready for that. So, and then I think the barricades for the stage will be delivered Friday. And then Guy is taking care of the other, the street blockages and all the signage and stuff for that, so.
And all the new electrical?
It's all ready to go.
Ready to roll up the street?
Yep, everything's been checked, everything, all the meters are in, everything's checked. Should have no problem.
Because it was really strange, last year, everybody kept saying, why do you got the lights on? Why do you have the lights on? You know?
No.
So he's wasting money, you know?
We won't have those on until they go on by themselves. So other than that, everybody's got to make sure they bring their own cord because we don't furnish them.
All right.
Last year was a big learning lesson.
Yeah, it was. Well, it was interesting, people were asking the same question, why do the city just turn the nightlights on during the day? It's wasting taxpayers' money. So you had to explain that 10 or 20 times, it seems like.
Also, we finished the waterway out at Andorra. We're going back for the second spring, just to check, make sure what we didn't, what didn't have enough on it, we're going to do it again next week after the Fall Festival. We'll go out there and hit that again, hopefully put that to bed for winter. And then pool, we have it drained, all but the bathrooms at the, by the playground for the, we'll keep those open until the end of October. And then we'll winterize the main pool part, the, or the office part, I guess. We'll get, we'll take care of that. And then, as Gary has said, we've been, we painted the gazebo and the front entrance to it, we've still got some touch-up we want to do, we noticed a couple spots, so we're kind of working on between the Fall Festival stuff, we're kind of going back and forth between that, so.
Maybe this is a Terry question. What is the intent as far as the reopening of the existing outdoor pool? Will that be used next year or is...
Yes.
One more year.
Fingers crossed, we get everything open next spring and can use it one more time.
Because in theory, hopefully if everything goes well, the new pool setup would be done by August, in theory?
Right.
Full-time.
Full-time?
And then that one, that one opened, we'll close this one and take care of it.
I've been asked by several people, what's the intent of what we're going to do with the area where the old pool was, you know? So I know we haven't really discussed that.
We've talked at different times about relocating the tennis courts up on top of the hill to get them off the top of the water.
Right. And that's typically what I've been saying, that's one option we've looked at, but nothing else has really been put on the table.
That's really the only discussion that I've been involved in.
Any other questions?
I got one more comment for Brad. Maybe I'm only one that noticed, but the shrubbery on the edge of City Hall and the mulch was being replaced and everything's been trimmed and it looks excellent.
Thank you.
Done a very good job of doing that.
Yeah, we tried to do that once a year and we were just a little bit behind this year with all the other projects, so.
I like for City Hall to look as good as possible when people come in.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Brad, appreciate it. All right, next we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Guy Jivers.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item I have is a monthly report. We got some sidewalks replaced on Northeast Street and West Oak. Been working in the pool park, grading the road, the road end. We had a couple sewer calls, two are on the city, on Dogwood and Second Street, those have been taken care of. The highway bore by Coca-Cola is completed for the sewer line and we're looking to have that part of the sewer project completed in January, where we can get the lift station going and get that completed. Right now, they're in the process of boring under Highway AA to get underneath AA, get through that field, so that's going along pretty good. We also, it might not be a big deal, but it is to us, the wet test at the wastewater plant, we do once a year, that's where they put the fish in aquarium and they use the effluent water. We passed that, so that's a good thing. Any questions?
Well, I was looking at the road repair list this morning, today, but if you go up Army Road where it dead ends into just north of the hotels there, it looks like, it's not in the concrete part, there's some asphalt, looks like some semis must have been through there and the road's in pretty bad shape, so I don't know if we can go up there and do some kind of patch on it. So it's the end of Army Road, just north of where that, the last hotel is.
By Arlington.
By Arlington, yeah. So I didn't think, I didn't see that was being part of, was on the list because it's not in the concrete section, it was actually an asphalt section.
And Guy, I had a business owner on Veterans Memorial Parkway, before you get to the outlet center, that expressed concern that the turn lanes, he thought there should be more arrow markings so that people knew which, when they were supposed to get in that lane to use it. I told him I wasn't sure whether that was city or MODOT maintenance, but I'd just ask you to drive down through there and see if it looks adequate to you or if something needs to be added or changed.
Isn't that MODOT currently?
That's MODOT.
It eventually will be us, but it's not yet.
I think it says, I think it's right there by the TTVM site, I think that turns the state right there, doesn't it?
I'll have to look. If it's MODOT, I'll see if I can hurry up and get it pushed before we got a takeover.
I think it says state, state maintenance begins right in front of Oliver's, I think. So it might be there, might be there this year.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Guy. Next we'll hear from the Chief of Police, Larry Eller.
Evening, Board. The first item I have for you is a monthly report. Any questions?
Few more calls in August, huh?
It's getting toward the end of summer.
Any other questions or comments on the monthly report?
So I also have the first of many policies to be reviewed for you to review and hopefully approve. Do you have any questions about those?
These are all standard policies that are necessary for us to become accredited?
Yes. Most of those are already existing, that's why they've made it through first, is they just needed tweaks.
Yeah. On the rest of them, are they going to give you a template or do you have to kind of recreate the wheel?
Yeah, there's a list.
Okay.
We actually have to thank the city of Chesterfield. They were very generous in providing us with their sample policies on a disk in Word format, so it makes it a little bit easier for us to be able to attack the 187 or whatever it is that has to be done.
So 100, four down, 183 to go, is that what it is?
Counselor, do these need to be passed individually?
It's a little easier to lay them covered on.
Is that way it's a little easier to lay them covered on? Is there any other questions on any of the policies? Alright. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, no, I'm gonna butcher this. Naloxone?
Naloxone.
Naloxone outside, I'm sorry?
Narcan.
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 The outside employment command notification and written directive system policies as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman John Miller. Roll call, please.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion carries five-zero.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Zoning Officer and Building Commissioner, Jack Hannah.
First item I have is my monthly building code enforcement report. Pretty typical, weeds, trash violations and unlicensed vehicles are the top three.
Any questions on those?
Do you have a new staff member on, Cam?
Yes, we have a first full-time code enforcement officer and we still have a part-time code enforcement officer. And that might explain why we had more violations rolled up last month than we've ever had.
Really been working on tall weeds. A lot of yellow signs in the yard.
Next item I have is a special event permit, SEP twenty-nine approval request. So approval request for the Warren County Fair Association's Pride and Your Ride Truck Show, uh, special event permit, SEP twenty-nine. On August sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, Paul OMB care of the Warren County Fair Board submitted a special event permit. Approval request for the Pride and Ride Truck Show event to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on September the thirtieth. Motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one abstention due to business relationship at the September seventh, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. And Mr. OMB is here if you have any specific questions.
Motion to approve the Warren County Fair Association's Pride and Your Ride Truck Show for second.
Motion made by Alderman Costello, signed by Alderman John Miller. Roll call, please.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Next item I have is a special event permit, SEP thirty, approval request. On August sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, Paul OMB care of the Warren County Fair Board submitted a special event permit, SEP thirty, approval request for a mud run and dirt drags event to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on October the fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one abstention due to business relations at the September seventh, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional comments.
Any questions or comments on that? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special event permit for the WCFA mud run and dirt drags on, consider SEP dash thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, signed by Alderman Shell Harvey. Roll call, please.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
The last item I have is a site plan, SP one thirteen revised parking approval request. On September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, a request was filed for the approval of a revised parking layout for the Mama Bears Daycare located at seven oh five Powell Street, uh, per approved site plan, SP one thirteen. In your packet, you have the new proposed layout that they're requesting approval for and you have the original, uh, parking layout that was approved per ordinance twenty-three thirty-nine on May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Is this in the old Masterson building?
Yes.
Yeah. And the goal is to allow them to increase their playground area and, and they, the applicants are here if you have any specific questions for them.
Why on the south side, uh, no parking? That looks like that's, that is a parking area.
They, they do not have enough, uh, distance between the existing building and their property line to do the perpendicular parking stalls and the twenty-three-foot required drive aisle. We met on-site and measured, uh, took their survey and measured the dimensions out there and it'll work fine on the north side where they show they're doing parking stalls a lot on the north side, but it's not wide enough to meet the parking requirements on the south side.
And you, does it help to have slanted parking?
There's nowhere to turn around, so basically the only way to get in and out would be the perpendicular parking. And I believe they have more than enough, uh, parking per code and per their need. If I'm right, you have three employees and then other than that, it's pick up and drop off throughout the day.
How much space is on the side of that building on the side that Alderman and Shell Harvey is questioning? I can't, is that say fourteen feet? Forty, what does that say? Forty feet?
Forty feet, yes, sir.
What should, what does it need to be?
Need a minimum of forty-two.
It just seems like that's a lot of wasted space.
Yeah.
It could be used or something, but I'm, okay.
Well, the board has the authority to waive parking requirements. That'd be strictly up to you, but I think what they submitted.
Blame us, Jack.
No, I'm just making a fact, sir. I believe this meets their requirements, what they asked for.
Are you guys here? Is that, does?
If you guys would come forward to the podium, please.
Sure.
But if they're good, if they're good with it to go like this, that's fine. But I just, just look to me like it's a lot of wasted space.
You could state your name, please.
Margaret Fulcham.
Emily Williams. And I'd like to point out, if I could, that the main concern was not to extend our playground so much as it was to keep cars from driving around our playground. It's a safety issue for us.
Around the back of the building and where we're going to the playground.
I mean, to your point, to your point, if it, if they have enough space, I mean, I don't see any point in trying to figure out how to create more parking space.
No, I'm just saying.
Sorry.
No, that's why I wanted them to come up here and explain. You don't, you don't need any more parking, basically, is the question.
Right. It's not that we wouldn't like to use that as parking, though we would, but they're saying we don't have enough space. Although, if you pull a vehicle in there, there is plenty of room to turn around. We've done it. Right.
Okay, let me rephrase that question.
Doesn't meet our, it doesn't meet our.
Right, right. So that's why it's blocked off.
Doesn't meet our ordinance.
No, I understand.
It's short by two feet.
Well, but my question is, why should we, if they're fine with it, and I'm not trying to open a can of worms here, it's, if they're, if they're fine with it, then sure, there's no need to alter it. Uh, I, so I wanted to address the citizens, make sure that they were okay with it, because we could certainly, as Jack pointed out, if we needed to modify, because we're talking about two feet, we could do that. But if there is no need to, to enhance your business of any sort, then there's no need to discuss it.
You can modify the number of spaces parking requirements, but not the, the numerical, the forty-two feet. That would require a board of adjustment hearing to modify that. So it's like you guys have the ability to say, "Oh, you're required by ordinance to have fifty-two spaces. We'll let you have forty." We've done that on downtown businesses all the time, where you guys, that's in fact why we put it in there, was for that.
For the amount of footage.
But not for the, the distance.
Again, all I'm doing is just dropping.
Yeah. Setbacks and everything else. We can, that's always.
It's through a board of adjustment.
I understand all that, okay? The, the whole, the question is, i- i- will this affect anything in the future? That is obviously a large space that is basically used for nothing. Uh, you folks are okay with it, that's fine. Is there anything that we're doing tonight? My question is, to hinder and step that particular, uh, area for in the future?
I don't understand.
They're, they're anxious to get open, I think.
Are you happy with the plans that are set forth? And that's, that's what we want, but thank you.
I think, not to belabor this, but we see this all the time. The time to have the discussion about an issue like this is when we're passing new code and when we are updating code, which we talked about at the last meeting, to the two thousand eighteen, the two thousand seventeen, whatever code, uh, is suggested, and we've got a code in front of us now that we have to update because we get, we get points from ISO. And ISO is who sets the insurance classification on fire rates. And if we don't stay within a certain revision of building code, then they nick us for that and it costs you money because then your insurance rates go up. But, but it's difficult for me to sit here, we're talking about, "Well, let's just change it." We send these people out to do exactly what they're asked to do, set by the code that you all approved. And it's not as easy as just throwing up your hand and say, "Well, are you happy? 'Cause we sure wanna make you happy." And I'm not, this isn't pointed towards you, but I get, I've seen this over and over and over again, that our staff gets beat up for doing what this board votes to put into law.
What's your point?
My point is, you can't sit there, John, and say, "Well, what can we do to make it happy? Make you happy?" All you wanna do is say, "Okay, go do what you want." Your city attorney just told you that you can't do what you're suggesting. You can change the number of parking places, but you can't change the actual area that it takes to create a parking spot. That's called public safety.
That's why I asked the question, Greg. And I wanted to address these folks, because I do feel that the citizens should have some input.
They have it. They have it. They've worked very hard with Mr. Ham to try to make this work and I.
And I don't understand the outrage of.
It's not an outrage, I just, the, the idea that our staff is the bad guy.
Thank you.
Because they're enforcing city code is just ludicrous.
Well, and either way, I believe the point's been made. We do have that meeting coming up and this is something we can address or we can look at the issues at hand and address those, but, um, that is, well, offense both the guys, but it is what we have to take into consideration as both sides, is one, is we do have to listen to the public, but two, it is up to us and we do set forth. Um, I think one of the points that needs to be made out of this is people get aggravated at Jack, people get aggravated at Terry, people get aggravated at other people, and we seem to be the buffer. Folks, there again, we set that standard. You're gonna be aggravated, you need to be aggravated at your elected officials and your mayor first.
Absolutely right.
Because we do put those in place. Um, if that aggravation comes out to our employees, I apologize to our employees, first of all, but secondly, um, it should be directed towards us. So if you're watching this, default lies with this board if there's issues, but also understand there are certain codes and it's just not as easy as what people think it is.
Make a motion, we accept the recommendation.
Uh, actually, it's in the bill. Okay. Alright, alright. And I, I will say, uh, thank you to Alderman Gary Miller. You took your time out to go out and try and, as an elected official, be a buffer in that area, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Good people to work with.
I was unfortunately not able to make it out that morning, so I apologize. Anything else, Jack?
No, sir.
I have something else.
I have something for Jack, too. After you.
Um, first of all, I don't know where all that came from, but that certainly wasn't directed at, at recommending any of our code enforcements. All I was doing is, as I've done in the past, is I had let the citizens speak, and that's all that was. All that other stuff, I don't have any idea where that came from. So if I offended you in any way, Jack, I apologize.
Yeah, I guess I'm sorry I started that.
Yeah, it's your fault, Mike.
I don't think there needs to be an apology.
Not about a fault. Not about a fault.
So, so to move on. So, um, I mentioned to Terry something, I don't know if she had a chance to talk to you. It looks like people are starting to move in, 'cause we have this War, this Fairground Villa opening house, and there's one section of it that's already been approved for people to move into.
Yes.
But I thought the site plan required, um, fencing, specific fencing along Fairground Road, on, on Fairground Road and the others, and the fencing is not up yet. So I was kinda curious why we gave a permit for people to move in if they haven't completed that section of the project?
Um, we gave a temporary occupancy permit, which is very common on residential and commercial projects, as long as all the safety and them items are addressed in the structure, we can allow them to move in. And then they have X amount of days to finish the punch list for other items. A lot of typical things is like the grass and the grading and that, and we've allowed them to use a temporary trash enclosure there while they're getting going. It was just an effort to help them get people in their project.
And I understand that, because certainly they wanna start bringing in income as quick as they can. My only concern was, when we went through that whole process, a lot of the neighbors in Fairland Circle were concerned about the appearance and what it, what it would look like. And one of the things we tried to give them assurance was, is there would be privacy fencing on the back and there would be landscaping. My only concern was if, if they all of a sudden start moving a lot of people in and don't get those punch list items down, what leverage do we have to make sure that happens? 'Cause to me, it was kinda like a public trust thing with them, that we would make sure that would happen. That's my only comment.
Okay, well, we can, we can tell them that they need to get them done immediately in the two buildings where the people are living.
Living, okay, I appreciate that.
It's just an effort, like we always do, of working with people.
And I understand that. We have, and I understand the developer, the developer wants to bring in revenue as quick as he can, 'cause he's got a business plan, he wants to make money, and that's understandable. We want him to make money. But I, my concern was, there was so much public comment about that. We had meetings with residents, Holiday Inn one time and all this stuff going on. We tried to give them some assurances that the city government was going to make sure that this looked the way that we, we told them, and I think they had agreed with the developer to do. That was my only comment.
Not a problem. We'll make sure we get that corner next to the two occupied buildings taken care of.
Okay, great.
Any questions, your colleagues?
Jack, you're off the.
Excuse me?
You're off the.
It's no problem. Comes with the territory from my position. Code enforcement and building rules.
I do have a question.
Sad to say, you delivers unhappy news to people on a regular basis.
We've been getting a lot of concerns about the build-out building, residential property. I'm trying to think what road that is behind where the school, and I noticed that there was a dumpster put out there.
Fourteen Roy Avenue.
Roy Avenue, yeah. So is that, is that moving along?
Yes, yes, demo permits been issued and then, uh, Mr. Diller's been in there working every day.
Okay.
This week and started in there last week.
What kinda timeframe is he under to finish it up? Do you know?
He's hoping to have everything from the interior. He's already filled one dumpster. He's hoping to have the rest of the interior gutted this week and have the structural engineer back out. There's certain items that they know that needs to be removed, um, and there's some areas of the subfloor that he's hoping to reuse, but he needs to get everything cleared out first. And I believe Friday is when he's scheduled to have his structural engineer back out there.
Yeah, 'cause I think most people, most people's concerned, it's probably not interior, it's exterior, the parts of the building you can see that are burned out through this roof and all that.
The entire roof is, it will be removed.
Oh, okay.
And the, the sections of the exterior walls will be removed.
Several concerns, 'cause I, I know, what, a week, two weekends ago, I had a young lady who came by with a petition. My wife answered the door and, uh, started listening to it and said, "Well, you know what? I have somebody who'd like to, you'd probably like to speak with." So she threw me underneath the bus and made me get up from the couch and go out there and actually had about a forty-five minute conversation with her and it was quite nice. Here's some of the things she had to say, but when we referred her to City Hall, um, she got the answer she wanted and was actually pretty satisfied and has postponed the petition because she believes that we are moving forward, we're trying to get something done. So she was appreciative of it.
Good.
I think they were concerned about skunks.
Oh, everything. Kids, yes. Nuisance. Um, any other questions or comments?
All right, we've reached this section of bills to ordinance. I will entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number 65-17.
So move.
Shell Harvey, Alderman Shell Harvey, and a motion made by Alderman John Miller.
In ordinance approving an amended site plan for Mama Bear's Daycare located at 705 Powell Street.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number 65-17. Second. Motion made by Alderman Costello, signed by Alderman Shell Harvey.
In ordinance approving an amended site plan for Mama Bear's Daycare located at 705 Powell Street.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Absolutely.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion, our bill number 50. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number 66-17. So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shell Harvey, signed by Alderman John Miller.
In ordinance of the City of Warrton, Missouri, establishing an administrative review procedure for reimbursement from the city's special allocation funds.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number 66-17.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Costello, signed by Alderman Ock.
In ordinance of the City of Warrton, Missouri, establishing an administrative review procedure for reimbursement from the city's special allocation funds.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero. All right, I am at that point where I will entertain a motion for the close of regular board of all.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, signed by Alderman Ock. All those in favor say aye.
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 And we are so engendered, folks.